Okay, we'd like to call the meeting to order, please. We'll start off with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, this is a republic and an Asian underclass, individual's liberty, just for.
Okay, I want to thank everybody that's tuned in from the public, listening in on the teleconference call. We'll start off with the roll call of the council members.
Mr. Basil?
Here.
Mr. Brookmeyer?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Ms. Opbridge?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we all have all seven council members present. First thing we're going to do is we're going to catch up on, it's not on the agenda that way, but we're going to proceed about approving the minutes before we go to the mayor, update on the EPA findings. Everybody has, should have been mailed out copies of the minutes from both the March 30th and April 6th, minutes from those meetings. First of all, is there anyone, I'll start down the line. Frank, did you get the March 30th minutes?
I did.
Mark, did you get the March 30th minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Tara, did you get them?
Yes.
Thank you. Perry, did you get them?
Yes.
Thank you. Beth?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike, did you get them?
Yes.
Thank you. Linda, did you get the March 30th minutes also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm very quickly going to run down the line. Frank, do you have any questions on the minutes for the 30th?
None.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Tara, any questions on the 30th minutes?
No.
Thank you. Perry?
No, sir.
Thank you. Beth, any questions on the March 30th minutes?
No questions.
Thank you. Mike, any questions on March 30th?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. And Linda, any questions on March 30th minutes?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion from someone to approve the minutes from the March 30th meeting? Frank, anybody?
No, yeah, I, yes. Hey Jim?
Yes.
There's a lot of echo.
Okay, do you have your phone on speakerphone?
Yes, I do.
That's probably what will do it. Okay, Frank has made a motion to accept the minutes. Do we have a second? Anybody? Mark?
I'll second it.
Mike? Okay.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the March 30th council meeting. We'll now take a roll call vote.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mr. Brookmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Opbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven in favor.
Okay, seven oh vote to approve the minutes from the March 30th. Okay, we'll now move to the minutes from the April 6th meeting. Frank, have you received those minutes?
I did.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, Mark, did you receive those minutes?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions on the April 6th meeting?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Tara, did you receive those minutes for the 6th?
I did.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, Perry, do you, did you receive those minutes?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any?
No questions.
Pardon, do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Beth, do you have a question, or did you receive the minutes?
I received the minutes and I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mike, did you receive them and do you have questions?
I did receive them and I have no questions.
Okay, Linda, did you receive them and do you have a question? Linda, are you there or did we lose you?
No, I was on mute.
Oh, okay.
No questions, so I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. You say you have no questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll now entertain a motion from someone to approve the minutes from the April 6th Linda, do you want to make a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We'll get down the line. Mike, do you want a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the April 6th meeting. We'll now take a roll call vote.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mr. Brookmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Opbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. It's seven.
Okay, we have seven oh vote on the minutes for the April 6th meeting. Those minutes have been approved. Okay, the first thing now on the agenda, we're going to kind of get an update here from the mayor on the situation we're involved with, with the Ohio EPA findings and orders. Mayor Tolman, would you like to make your update, please?
Yes, thank you, Jim. And first again, thank you to Jim Beal, Jody Williams and Jim Bealus for making, formatting this teleconference, making it possible. And Mr. Bealus, thank you for allowing me to speak first, prior to Mr. Vaughn's report. But the things I wanted to say are important, and I think they needed to be said first. So there are three important points that need to be articulated. Number one, the final findings and orders came out, we got them last week. St. Clairsville had proposed a five-year plan to connect to alternative water sources. The EPA said, no, you have two years. And I quote in the findings and orders, within 60 days of the effective date of these orders, the respondent shall demonstrate to the Ohio EPA satisfaction that there is a sustainable and reliable alternative source of drinking water, and that it's available from an approved public water system to adequately supply daily usage for emergency situations, including long-term shortages. Number two, the EPA final findings and orders, which the city received, states that, and I quote, Order 3, Section B, Part 2, within 24 months of the effective date of these orders, respondent shall permanently connect to an approved public water supply by first submitting written documentation to the EPA for approval within six months of the effective date of the orders. So what that says is, when the EPA signs off on this, which I have signed, the clock starts ticking. The water plant and the reservoir are to be abandoned and retired in two years. And again, this is from the date of the signed EPA orders by their attorney. Prior to Mr. Vaughn's report, I would like to provide council with information that needs to be considered as our city moves forward in finding our solution for safe, drinkable water. First of all, the EPA progress report, we have strengthened our water system. Regardless of the direction we decide to take, to sell or maintain, the city has done a remarkable job. Jeff Vaughn, Donnie, Jody, everyone who's worked to put this together has done wonderfully. But we have two very large tasks that are running parallel to each other. The first is that we fix our water plant and reservoir in order to meet EPA standards, which will allow the city to continue providing safe, drinkable water to our residents and to our long-term plan as executed. And you can look at the progress report on what we have accomplished as a team in three short months. Donnie, again, Jeff, all administrative staff, thank you. Then there was the water option report that we had asked Mr. Vaughn to put together. And the turnaround time for this report was very short due to the Aqua deadline. Jeff has done an outstanding job pulling this together for us in 60 days. Typically, a report with this amount of in-depth information would require at least 18 months. Thank you, Jeff, for your patience, your knowledge and your hard, excuse me, hard work. But what this means, number two, my second point is, that the current proposed Aqua contract that is on the table is no longer applicable. The conditions and the findings and orders have changed the contract proposal. Changes would have to be made to capital expenditures, and in the contract, there's $4.5 million allocated in the contract for the water plant. That is no longer valid. And Jody, I'm going to ask you, is Ms. Bojko on the phone?
Yes, I have joined, thank you.
Hi, Kim, this is Ms. Kim Bojko, one of the attorneys with Carpenter and Lips who helped to execute the contract for the city with Aqua. And if you would not mind giving them a quick opinion, I would appreciate it.
Sure, great. Thanks for having me back. I recall meeting with the city council in, I believe it was in September of last year. And after, just to kind of give you an update of what's happened, after we met in September, we began negotiating, again, with a couple provisions at your request with Aqua. And if you recall, the sale of the system cannot be sold until there's PUCO approval. So we were concerned of a time period between the Aqua purchase and the actual closing date, when the transfer would occur and what would happen with the EPA orders. So in late October, we were negotiating with EPA and then also Aqua, and we negotiated additional proposed amendments. And I'm not sure if you all saw or not, but what it did was, it, before the closing, Aqua would have to agree that if there was a capital expenditure required by the EPA orders, that were in excess of $250,000, that the city had not planned to already do and allocate funds to, then we would have to renegotiate the purchase price of the contract. If we couldn't do that, either party could walk away after 30 days. So we did get agreement on that provision. And the significance of that provision is that now we're in the position where the EPA has actually issued the orders. And as was just explained by the mayor, the orders require certain improvements to be made that either city has already made, or is in the process of making, or must make within a certain time period in the order. And so what that does, as the mayor just described, is it, it's going to have to inevitably modify the Aqua purchase agreement. And I just wrote down two examples for you, so you would understand where we're coming from. For one, if the city does the sediment removal and cleans out the reservoir under Section 3B of the EPA order, then that obviously changes your deal, and it should increase the purchase price, because you've expended funds and you have improved the system. So you would want to renegotiate the purchase price, as we did before when we were talking about the water tank improvement and other items. So you would want to attempt to renegotiate some term, either the purchase price, or we got some employment benefits, if you recall, employee benefits, and other provisions in the agreement because of some of the improvements the city had made. So you would similarly want to do that. Secondly, the provision I just read to you, the proposed amendment about the capital expenditure, there's still a period of time where the PUCO is going to have to approve this. So if you have to fulfill the EPA order and make more of these improvements, then you would want to reconsider this paragraph that said add or in excess of $250,000. And you may now want to try to make that provision $100,000 or $200,000, because now the economics have changed. Another example would be if you do the second provision, which the mayor just described to you, which is to find an alternative source of drinking water and not use the reservoirs and actually take the supply from somebody else, then as, as the purchaser, why would Aqua want to purchase assets that no longer are viable or no longer will be used in the production and distribution of the water system? So if I look at the contract in the last stated, updated contract files from 9/29/19, and if you look at Section 1, Point 1, it is an asset provision, and then there's an asset list attached to the contract, Schedule 1.1. So that asset schedule would need to be revised, obviously, to correspond with the assets that you're actually transferring and would be used. If I was Aqua, and the purchase price should be, you know, significantly reduced by the assets that you are, you're not, or are not transferring to them. So that's an example of another one. The third example that I had here, which is what the mayor just mentioned, was that I would think that the fees that were based on both your, remember, we based electric rates as well as water rates and other fees were based on the system as it was going to be sold last year. And it is also based on the CapEx, the 10-year capital improvement expenditure sheet that Aqua was relying upon. So if that capital expenditure sheet needs to be changed, you would want to make sure that Aqua has in place a program to appropriately spend the residents' money. And that's what they had done with their CapEx 10-year program, but that would have to, I would want that to be revised as well. So the basic point is, as the mayor just stated, is the EPA orders have, I think, changed the economics of the deal, or the economics of the deal should be changed. And I don't believe that this has been discussed with Aqua, but that's one thing you'd want to do, is discuss with Aqua the economics of the entire deal. We'd have to revise the contract to make it correspond with the reality and the EPA orders now that already exist.
Thank you, Kim, so very much. And yes, we have notified Aqua that, you know, the contract is not, not valid due to findings and orders. They are aware of that. We've not sat down to renegotiate, but this, as you know, I just spoke with you on Saturday, this has been breaking like by the minute. So I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Happy to take any questions as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bojko?
Okay, we'll start down, Mayor, we'll start down in order so we don't have people talking over each other. I think basically what we're looking at is for a contract that would be beneficial to both of us, it would probably have to be renegotiated and not the current contract that has been considered. So we'll start down here with Frank at this point. Frank, do you have any questions you'd like to ask Ms. Bojko?
No, I just had an observation. Listen, Kim, thank you for speaking, Kim, and being upfront with us, but it sounds like it would, the contract as it was back in September would need a complete overhaul if the city would decide to go with Aqua. Am I hearing that correctly?
I don't know about a complete overhaul, the language and the terms wouldn't change, it would be the economics surrounding the deal, so the purchase price. Some of the value items, such as we negotiated employee benefits, employee retention to run the facilities, if you're not going to use the facilities in the same manner, I'm not sure if that would be necessary, probably for at least the one-year transition period. But things of that nature that have value would likely need to be renegotiated. We wouldn't have to start from scratch, but definitely there'd be a few provisions that need to be updated.
That's all I have. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Mark, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Ms. Bojko, if we were to choose to renegotiate this contract, what would the timeframe be? And would it, would it fit into the EPA window and to give us time to make a decision, read the contract over, either approve it or not approve it?
Um, I guess if you're talking about the deadline that Aqua has provided of May 4th, that's in two weeks. I think that might be a bit aggressive, just I haven't spoken to Aqua, so I'm not sure what they'd have scheduled. I don't think that it is a monumental task that couldn't be negotiated in, in a couple days or even a couple weeks. But I mean, it's just a, it's a time of what they have scheduled and the meetings that you need, and then approval from you all. I think a couple weeks, just knowing the normal process through city council and going through public offices, two weeks might be aggressive. But of course, it can be done. Attorneys often negotiate these contracts and provisions on very quick timelines, so I don't think that's the problem. It's just the, the two-week process might be a bit hurri, it just might be difficult with regard to all the public process that you have to go through to vote on it, as well as, I don't know what Aqua's schedule is, to be honest.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mark, Tara, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Perry, do you have any questions?
I have to go, sir.
Okay, Beth, do you have any questions?
Hey, Kim, thanks for coming. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mike, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions right now, but it's something to digest and think about, so I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Linda, do you have any questions for Ms. Bojko?
No.
Okay, thank you. I will just make, I just kind of ask one question here, just for general knowledge. Ms. Bojko, is, I assume no one is even at this point discussed with Aqua whether they would be even willing to renegotiate?
I will intervene. Jim, we talked to them today and alerted them to this, because again, this all broke pretty late, and they were very gracious about it, but we have not talked to them yet. I wanted to see, you know, go through our meeting tonight, and then based on what Ms. Bojko said, talk to Aqua and, you know, see what their commitment would be to doing this. So no, we have not talked about renegotiating the timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, this is Beth. Can I, can I ask a question now? Sorry about that.
Sure, sure, behave, Beth.
I just, I wonder, Kim, if the decision is to, to proceed with the sale, could we not then look at the contract at that point?
I'm sorry, you must have broken up. If, the question is, if you proceed with the sale, could you look at the contract plan?
Well, I guess I'm just, because of this two-week timeline, the vote has to be in two weeks to meet the Aqua deadline. There's no reason to, to look at the contract any further if the decision is not to sell. But if the decision in two weeks is to sell, could we change the ordinance or the resolution at that point to say, pending on successful contract negotiation? So that gives us some time to, to look at the negotiations if the decision is to sell?
I mean, of course, you can, you can do whatever you want, as long as Aqua agrees with you. It was my understanding that Aqua wanted an executed contract by May 4th. If they agree to extend that, to have approval by May 4th, and then to enter into contract negotiations, that is fine. I think, I have not talked to Aqua about renegotiating, because as I think the mayor just pointed out, I think she wanted to get some guidance from you all today before engaging in that next step, which would require money and resources to be spent. I think that's why, why we're here today, talking to you about it. But I, I think that if Aqua agrees to extend the execution of the contract date, sure, of course, you can do that, anytime, anytime.
And Beth, it's Catherine. When you say to execute a, an ordinance to sell, maybe to consider selling, because we want to know exactly what the contract says before you commit to sell, right?
Right. Right. I mean, that's obvious. Chicken in the air. Yeah. Sorry. Right, I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting to underscore Kim's point, that there's no reason to invest time and money if the council decision would be not to pursue with the sale. And we won't know that for two weeks. So that, that's what I'm saying. But I mean, I don't, I mean, we need to know what we're agreeing to, but I feel like to meet that deadline, if in two weeks the, the decision of council is to move forward with the sale, then, then we, if we could then talk about the contract expedited, I could appreciate, but I'm just trying to save time and resources if the decision is to proceed.
Good point.
Okay.
Beth, I, this is Elizabeth. I have a matter that you should consider. When you were voting on this contract last year, you had three readings, but it, there wasn't enough people to vote for it, so it was tabled. And it was based on the contract that you had negotiated at that time. So you would have to actually, if you're going to renegotiate parts of this contract, you would need to go through the whole resolution process, or the ordinance process all over again. So I mean, it could be on May 4th, you could do an emergency, but you'd have to do, follow all those rules, and do your three readings at one meeting.
Beth, does that answer your question?
Because you would no longer be voting on the contract that you were voting on back in November, in October.
So basically, Elizabeth, that would require three readings unless it was emergency legislation again.
Right.
Okay. Beth, does that answer your question?
Yes. And Elizabeth, remind me, what is, how many votes are required for an emergency? Is it six?
You need five.
Five, okay, thanks.
Okay, do you have any other questions for Kim, Beth, or for Elizabeth?
Kim, thank you very much. This is Catherine. Thank you so much. We so appreciate you participating.
Okay, if there's no further questions for Ms. Bojko, I'd like to thank her also for being on here tonight and trying to assist us in making this decision and discussing all the pertinent information that council will have to look at before a decision one way or another is reached. And I, again, thank you for your time and effort.
My pleasure, and I will excuse myself then. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jim, this is Catherine. If I could finish this, then we'll turn it over. Okay, and the third point that, that will change the contract is that the money allocated in the contract by Aqua for $500,000 to match the Bellevue project is no longer a valid cause. And here's the update on the Bellevue project. The past administration had hired diversified engineering from New Philly to study the Bellevue flooding situation and to provide the blueprints and construction cost estimates. This was completed for a cost to the city of approximately $100,000. The estimated cost for this project is $1.6 million. St. Clairsville applied for and was awarded $800,000 as a 0% loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission. But the past administration did not consummate signing the documents, nor was there a schedule submitted. The monies were only available on paper. No match money. No matched monies were identified from any funding agencies. And Aqua, as part of the current contract, states that they will provide matched money up to $500,000. On April 14th, the Ohio Public Works Commission sent a notice that due to the COVID-19 virus, any secured funding would need to be spent by July 1st of 2020. Therefore, the Bellevue project is placed on hold until a path forward can be determined. It certainly needs to be a priority. The scope of the flooding issue will be discussed with the affected residents and studied from all perspectives. Then lastly, I want to mention the fact that again, kudos to Jeff, Donnie, and the administrative team because we had 17 orders and findings that we were given from the EPA that were absolutely emergent. Our feet were put in the fire immediately. Out of these 17 items, and I don't think I need to read them all because I think this meeting is going to be long enough, about 80% of these are completed. And from what I understand today, Donnie, you have already installed two of the meters that were ordered to use to meter the water. I am really proud of the team that works for the state. And again, you all will receive that copy, the orders and findings update, so you can see how each and every single item has been addressed and so many of them are finished. And again, I can't say enough good things about this team. So I thank you, Jim, for letting me speak first. I thought those things should precede Jeff, um, report, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, if no one has any further questions, uh, we'll move on to, uh, presentation of Mr. Vaughn's report on the, uh, possibility of, uh, the city addressing the water issues. Mr. Vaughn? You have the floor, sir.
Yes. Alrighty, thank you. All right, uh, I'm going to give a report tonight, and the title of this report, which all council members have in their hands, they were given the report yesterday, um, is called Maintaining Public Ownership of Water and Wastewater Utilities and the Effect on User Rates. This was repaired, this report was prepared by our firm with the assistance of the Rural Community Assistance Partnership, and on this line also with me is Wayne Cannon of RCAP. I'd like to first of all thank all the staff of the city in responding to my sometimes incessant requests for information. Everyone was extremely helpful and responsive in providing that information. And those individuals are Annette, Anita, Leanne, and Donnie. Without their persistence to get what I needed, I could not have gone forward with this report as best I could prepare it in the timeline available. The purpose of the report is to investigate impacts on water and sewer rates and completing necessary upgrades through the city's water and sewer infrastructure under available municipal funding programs. A rate ordinance was implemented in 2019 that sets specific rate increases for the city for water and sewer beginning this year and going through 2022. So that sets the, the basis for this evaluation. I'd like to stress that this report is not meant to be us versus them, meaning public ownership versus Aqua Ohio. Council members, again, were given this report and they've had a limited amount of time to review it, but they have had some time to take a look at it. The preparation, again, was by our firm and RCAP, and Wayne Cannon on this call is a person that will give justice to the financial forecast that we will get to in the report. He is considered an expert at doing this type of work and is highly regarded by Ohio EPA and state and federal agencies. And that brings clout to this exercise that we're doing to show you what can be done using available public financing. I'd like to start by beginning a little bit about an introduction and background. Um, water and wastewater facilities that the city owns, most of you probably know this, but we'll just reiterate these things. You own a main reservoir, a Providence North Reservoir, surface water treatment plant, water distribution system from two inch up to 12 inch. There are no booster stations. You have a water spiroid elevated tank uptown, half a million gallons, and a multi-legged, uh, tank that's 300,000 gallons, and that's slated for demolition at some point. And then also you constructed what I would term a hydroconstant standpipe water storage tank system over near the, the Commons, and it's a short 500,000 gallon standpipe with duplex booster station for pumping water back into the system. Not the same thing as the elevated tanks. The wastewater facilities include the following. You have a main wastewater plant, you have a west end small, what we call a package plant serving that, you know, development institutional and residential area, and you have gravity sewer lines and manholes, and you have about 10 lift stations and force main pipe. The city has received a proposal from Aqua Ohio to sell the water and wastewater utilities, all those assets, to them and to be out of the water and wastewater utility business. Additional background information, the mayor went into it in a fair amount of depth, but I'd like to reiterate a few points myself in this report. The, uh, new city administration was elected in, in November of 2019 and took office beginning in January. Immediately, the new administration was challenged with addressing new Ohio EPA Director's findings and orders relating to the surface water plant and the reservoirs. Those findings and orders were issued due to the condition of the water plant, main reservoir, Providence reservoir, and the city's complete inaction on numerous Ohio EPA violation letters issued to the previous administration during the period of 2016 to 2019. The new administration, in the first quarter, negotiated these final orders that the mayor has alluded to, and they've received the final version for signature by the city. They detail specific actions that the city must take in regards to operating that surface water plant, reservoirs, and distribution system. And as you noted, the most notable order being the retirement of the water plant, and it has, happens to be in a two-year timeframe. In the orders negotiation, the city proposed, we were trying for a five-year period to, to continue to make water while we got ready to purchase water, which we had to tell them we would do. The timeframe allows Belmont County to replace their water plant in the relocation of what we call a critical, uh, booster station on State Route 9 that provides water to the city's water plant booster station connection. The five-year timeframe allowed the city time to do a water audit, leak survey, and reduce the amount of unaccounted for water in the system prior, prior to purchasing 100% finished water from the county. You don't wanna buy water and pay for it and leak it into the ground, so you want to make sure you account for leaks and do the best you can before you purchase it 100%. However, due to the city's history, again, not taking any action on these inspections, the EPA told us that you must do this retirement in two years. So that's where we are, and additionally, the city needed to demonstrate to the Ohio EPA that Belmont County could provide 100% of the city's water demand during the time year, five-year time period needed by the county to replace their water plant and this State Route 9 booster station. In order to do that, the city and the county would need to work together to replace the original, what we term the East 40, US 40 East End Booster Station, to allow it to supplement the water plant booster station. The, the current water plant booster station does not have enough hydraulic capacity allowed by the county to pump all the water the city needs to the system. It has to be supplemented by the East End Booster Station. Everyone has, the council members I'm speaking of, I provided a figure, and we'll go to the middle on Figure B, and that kind of gives you an idea of the location of the original US 40 East End Booster Station and a proposed new location for its replacement. And that station would be sized to provide 100% of the city's needs and it'd also be a redundancy backup for the other station, and it would help Belmont County to balance supplying water to the city at two different locations. Knowing that the city must purchase finished water from a separate public water system, these locations were identified as best to provide that water for Belmont County as being, um, the East End Connection and then the existing water plant booster station. One thing we wanted to do in all this exercise was take a look at, are there other alternatives for providing bulk water? And as we thought about this, we have the existing one at Belmont County, and then we also have a potential one that we went through a conceptual evaluation, which I will discuss, the city of Martins Ferry. I'd like to talk about the Belmont County one further. In the early 60s, the city in Belmont County installed two connections from the county system to the city's water distribution system. One connection was in the north side of 40 that I've mentioned, adjacent to the intersection of US 40 and Rim Road. We call that the East End Connection. The second connection was on the west side of Clark Road, at the south end of that bridge that crosses I-70, near the intersection of Willow Grove and Clark Roads, where the old BMV used to be. Each of these connections were comprised of a single booster pump and a master meter. Both connections ceased providing county water to the city in 2005, when a joint project was implemented near the water plant that I spoke of to pump county water into the plant's main transmission line to the city's distribution system. The city has had, since that time, in the early 90s, they, they enacted an agreement to purchase water from Belmont County, and that requires that the city purchase a certain amount of water every year. In 2005, the city in Belmont County completed a joint water project with the county, paying for a contract to install a 12-inch water line from their system to the St. Clairsville water plant and the city constructing a water plant booster station at the water plant. The project received funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission. The intent of this project was to provide a means for the city to pump county water into their system through the main transmission line from the water plant to the water storage tank. A master meter was installed in the booster station for billing purposes. The city continued to use their reservoirs and the water plant. When reservoir levels became low due to dry years, county water would be either blended with the city's water, or 100% county water would be pumped into the city's transmission line. Ultimately, that plan was that when the reservoirs and the treatment plant were no longer a viable source for the city, the booster station would furnish 100% of the city's water needs. Again, I mentioned this was a joint project by the city and the county. It was kind of envisioned as a phase one for the eventual, uh, supplying of water by the county when the reservoir did have to be retired where we are today. Figure A that you have shows the routing of that water line from the McGee-Barlow Road area, 12-inch line, down Henderson Road over to the water plant. And that was installed in, again, 2005. And again, the, uh, Figure B that I showed you shows the arrangement of the proposed replacement East End Booster Station. Uh, and again, we had to, uh, we had to show that because the water plant booster station at this time can't provide 100% of the city's needs. And EPA said, well, how can that, how can you demonstrate the 100%? And the county and the, and the city sat down, the county said, let's reactivate the East End Booster Station. Now, it'll take some money, but we, we would need to do that in this interim period before we are robust enough to provide 100% from the original connection. The cost for that, um, booster connection that we're talking about at the East End is approximately a project cost of $518,000 that I'm showing in the bottom of this, of the report. If no one knows this, but Belmont County's water source is down near the Ohio River. It's a 16-foot diameter ranny collector well fed by nine horizontal wells located at the north end of Bel Air and adjacent to the Ohio River. The water is a true groundwater source taken from an aquifer that flows to the Ohio River. The raw water collected in the ranny is pumped up to the county's plant, which is, was built in the 60s, up on 214, and plans are to replace the plant with a new one close to the ranny well near Moxie Distributing at the north end of Bel Air. Now, our other option that we did take a look at, because we have good neighbors in Martins Ferry, um, they provide finished water to their citizens from a water plant supplied by nine vertical groundwater wells. The plant provides similar quality as Belmont County's groundwater source. Those wells are adjacent to the Ohio River, similar to the Belmont County ranny collector well. The plant is currently producing finished water at less than 50% of its plant capacity. The city would like to sell additional water. Martins Ferry sat down with the city and postured the idea of installing a raw water or a finished water transmission line from their system to the city's distribution system. This concept is not economical because Belmont County's connections are already in place, and a Martins Ferry connection line of minimum length of around six and a half miles would have to be installed or constructed. Conceptual idea of how this would work is shown on Figure C, and it's a connection, a 10-inch water line is proposed to go from, Martins Ferry has a 12-inch line on US 250 in the Colrain area, near the, uh, the tall Colrain tank and the shorter Colrain tank. That line would be routed within roads right of way, the Crescent Road, North Sugar, and eventually connect into the St. Clairsville system. The main Martins Ferry tank overflow exceeds St. Clairsville's overflow by about 70 feet, which is good. We'd have to have a booster station down the Barton area, which would pump the water at the needed flow rate into the St. Clairsville system and keep the tank full. Looking at this scenario, just making a, a assumption of a 30-year 0% Ohio EPA loan, project cost of 6.2 million, um, and equating that to a per customer cost, you're coming up with a flat rate of about $7.20 per customer to put in something like that for a period of 30 years into the future. And that cost development is shown on the bottom of the, of the report there. As discussed before, Belmont County currently provides water to the city through the, the connection at the water plant. Um, however, during the next five years, this connection cannot provide 100% of the city's water demand, and the US 40 East End Booster will be replaced to provide the additional water needed. It also provides future redundancy for the city's water demands by two points of connection to that system, and it helps the county balance, like I mentioned, the city's demand from two different locations in their transmission system. If we take the cost that I showed for that booster station of the project cost of around 518,000, and equated it the same way to a customer count for the next 30 years, it comes out to about 60 cents per customer. And additionally, the bulk rate that currently is paid by St. Clairsville in their Belmont County agreement is $4.36 per thousand gallons. Martins Ferry has verbally estimated a cost of around $5 per thousand to sell bulk water. Therefore, this exercise, you know, this alternative cannot be justified as cost-effective in comparison to the existing Belmont County connections. But it's worthy to go through the analysis because it was asked, and those folks would like to sell more water, and we just needed to, uh, indicate to everyone what that means in terms of real numbers. Let's discuss system upgrade priorities in the water and the sewer system. The water system, uh, the long-term source and supply issue has been resolved through the EPA final findings and orders process negotiated by the current administration in this first quarter. Minimal funds will need to be expended during the following two years on maintaining the water plant and the intake structure, since we're not gonna have a long life to it. The priorities remain in the water system to install meters in all remaining un-metered sources within the city. in all remaining un-metered sources within the city. This activity is in full progress by city staff and personnel, thanks to Mr. Smithberger, by ordering meters for all remaining un-metered areas. And then from that, a water audit will be performed with a hundred percent metering in place. From there, we can actually determine the difference between unbilled customers, city locations by that, and actual leaks into the ground. Knowing the leak amounts, perform a water system leak survey through the installation of area meters, listen to the lines, valves with technology available, identify points of significant leakage, perform point repairs for immediate loss and so on. And from the leak survey, identify priority areas for the phased water line replacement projects of the future. And then plan and execute phased water line projects within the parameters of what I would call affordability based on user rate and the annual increases over time. This report identifies executed funding construction projects over multiple years during the next ten year forecasting period. This is not complete replacement of all the city's lines. They would go beyond that timeframe. Lower priority areas will be replaced further into the future. We're only looking at a ten year period, as was done in the in the Aqua assessment also. Wastewater system, the priorities in the wastewater system are as follows. The number one obviously is the Overbaugh Bellevue Storm Sewer, uh sanitary sewer separation project. The city identified the Bellevue Street area as a critical area for replacing storm sewer and sanitary sewers to eliminate basement flooding in about three homes during significant wet weather events. Consultant has prepared plans and specs for the construction of permanent repairs to construct new storm and sanitary sewers in that area. The estimate for that complete correction is about one point six million, with the source of funds not secured at this time. The cross connections cause what Ohio EPA terms water in basement. And of course, they're famous for acronyms. They always call it W I B, WIB, web events to occur. These are serious matters and they must be addressed. Public health and safety is at risk. This project cannot begin, however, until it is fully funded. Recommendation is to perform value engineering as a function of the project to determine if future WIB events can be eliminated with a lesser scope and cost project. From that value engineering determination, a plan can be formulated on how to move forward and resolve the reoccurring problems for these specific homes. There may be something regarding phasing in portions of that project, but at this time, city cannot undertake a one point six million dollar project with no funding in place. Next priority is implementing an inflow and infiltration control program. The city prepared an I N I control plan in two thousand and nineteen through a consultant. There are good recommendations for beginning that program. The focus that I believe should be emphasized on is individual residential and service laterals from both them and commercial and their contribution to the overall I N I issue with the sanitary sewer system. A lot of times you've done, uh we see examples, the Ohio EPA has mentioned them, of large um I N I control programs on main sewer lines with individual residential service laterals. That's the four inch lines and the six inch going from the curb back to the house. It did not, were not addressed. And as soon as that project was over, I N I was still just about as high because those lines act like they're old loose clay many times. They're acting like French drains and you still have flooding out of your system. I N I reduction throughout the entire sewer system should be viewed as an ongoing activity where activities are performed every year to identify and correct sources of I N I. This work is not viewed as critical or emergency for area work except where sewage is backing up in homes during what we have seen as heavy wet weather periods in the past few years. These activities are detailed in the separate I N I control plan document. Some of this work could be accomplished ongoing through the sewer fund expenditures of the sewer department. Where significant point repairs of the main lines are identified, a capital project would be completed. The main wastewater plant does need a capital project to upgrade, replace current influent wastewater screening and grit removal. When you have incomplete removal of the physical debris and influent wastewater, which means screenings uh and grit, they cause downstream issues for pumps and processes which result in increased maintenance costs. The existing screening and grit removal facilities in the plant need to complete overhaul to provide the necessary benefits to the treatment plant, which ultimately is to minimize operation maintenance costs. The west end package plant that serves the Respecs area and the residential area of Space View has multiple improvements throughout to remain in an efficient plant for the future. And those improvements may be able to be performed under the general repair and replacement budget of the sewer fund, where they may be suited for a capital project. The immediate need is to eliminate the chlorine and dechlorination process of using gaseous chemicals, which is viewed today as just too darn dangerous for minimally trained employees of the future. Uh the water, the wastewater plant, the main plant, two years ago had a chlorine leak and they replaced that with a very simple tablet chlorinator style, in tablet style dechlorinator. These are relatively expensive solutions, easy to implement. It's recommended to plan for the eventual replacement of this particular plant with a lift station enforcement to pump all collected sewage to the main plant. Although that's not a priority in this analysis at this time. All right, now we'd like to discuss implementing these priority improvements that we discussed through the water and the sewer department. What are the funding programs that are available to the city? As has been stated in the past, the city's median household income from the previous census is high, sixty five thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars. This value does not allow the city to be eligible for Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account or Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, principal forgiveness grant funding, Ohio Public Works Commission grant funding, or other federal grant programs. At this level of medium household income, the city is viewed by the agencies as simply able to afford raising user rates, loaning monies to a higher level to finance the infrastructure improvements. The user rates must be at a certain level before the community is basically eligible for grant funding. Therefore, the loans the city can acquire at this time and that are shown in this analysis are assumed, worst case, at market interest rates. The financial analysis performed in this report of the water and sewer funds was performed for a ten year period. And the water and sewer priorities that I went over and listed earlier, they are implemented in this analysis. The current user rate ordinance enacted with new rates beginning in March of two thousand and twenty and increasing through March of twenty-two, a three year period, they were used with additional future rate increases projected based on proposed priority capital projects and three and a half percent inflationary cost increases. Financial data for the analyses was obtained from the utility office billing clerk and the finance director. Um for all this data, as I mentioned earlier, they were very helpful in providing that information in a timely manner. Many assumptions were made at this level of planning that are conservative in nature due just to the amount of data needing to look at. Recommendations for moving this planning effort to the next level is to perform what's termed a asset management plan. Such a plan reviews in depth all city financial and utility data to establish a working financial and utility model for the city to follow in the future. And it makes the process easy. Once you engage that planning process, you just follow it into the future and you have a guideline for future efforts and rates. The high priority wastewater issue of the Overbaugh and Bellevue Storm Sewer separation is included in this analysis that we have provided at the current estimated project cost as a placeholder, even though the funding pathway forward is not identified at this time. Assumptions are made in this planning exercise that in a specific year, priority water and sewer projects will be executed. Must be understood that there's, you know, a certain amount of subjectivity to these timelines. In reality, they will change. Looking ahead ten years is a long time. We all know how much things can change in that timeframe. Included in the appendices as backup to what I've put into the report itself are a water history for the last four years, two thousand and sixteen to nineteen of the water department, including the purchases of water from Belmont County and the previous user rates. For the last three years, Belmont County purchases of water were were minimal, the actual contract minimum amount. The water forecast is shown for the next ten years, two thousand and twenty out to two thousand and twenty-nine, which includes purchasing of bulk water in after two years, priority capital projects, projected user rates to support the operation and the capital projects debt service that will be incurred. The same thing is with the sewer, history and forecasting. And I do apologize to council that those were all put together and I did not title each of them, but they are listed in the order they are. History, forecast for the water, history and forecast for the sewer. Um they're all one after another. The water, and now what you see next, I've taken an excerpt of the forecasting model and placed it into the body of the report here because this is the essence of what everyone here wants to see. What are the water rate adjustments projected to support water department operations and priority projects that we've identified? Um and that again is in the appendices, the detail. And you can see where this particular table we're looking at with water rate adjustments was pulled out of. And at this time, I'd like to um, I'd like to have Wayne Cannon speak a little bit to this table and the analysis of statements that I've made here and just kind of go over that with everyone. Because this is his model and this is what he is very good at doing. Wayne? You there, Wayne? Seem to have a technical difficulty. I'm not sure where Wayne is. He said he was on the call here at the beginning. Wayne, are you on the call? Okay, well, I'll continue with that. I'm not sure what happened here, but he introduced himself at the beginning of the call and was on here. Um the rate adjustment block that we have here is showing your rates as we begin off with the rate adjustments in the first year, and that would be two thousand and twenty, at nine percent. The next year, eight percent, and the next year, seven point seven percent. If you look on down in the table here for the base rate of two thousand gallons, the rate is twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for two thousand gallons in the first year. And then that rate continues up, twenty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And the next year, twenty-six ninety-eight. And that would be during the first three years of the council ordinance rate enactment. And then from there, we have continuing increases to support the level of borrowing that we've alluded to and discussed in the forecast model. In the fourth year, the projected increase would be five percent. Next year, four percent, three, and on out to two percent as it's going forward. And as you can see in a given row, water rates, the base rate, two thousand gallons, that number continues to increase, um twenty-eight dollars, twenty-nine, thirty, and so on. Those are the increases that are going to be incurred through the projects developed and the debt occurring over a ten year period. If you go down to the bottom of that block, you can see line item, um the bill for forty-five hundred gallons, typical residential bill, which is a blue line, and affordability index. The purchase of Belmont County water begins in year three and debt service payments are being paid beginning in year four with the capital projects. And um the typical, blue, typical residential bill line item down at the bottom here shows the average water bill for three thousand, one hundred and nine gallons per month, which is the city average bill in consumption. So you can see that going from the current one, about thirty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents, increasing to thirty-six fifty-one, thirty-eight fifty-four. And then all the way out to the right, forty-three dollars for a typical residential bill in ten years with the projection of costs that we've made in this forecasting model for those critical items. The red line below, what does affordability index mean? Shows that for that typical residential bill, usage of three thousand, one hundred and nine gallons per month, that that bill would be a certain percentage of the affordability index. So in the year two thousand and twenty, you're at sixty-three percent of what the funding guidelines say you should be able to afford. And then projecting out to the end, you're at seventy-nine percent. So it means the projects you've engaged in here and you've moved them forward and phased them in in regards to your rate increases are within what's considered an affordable range for what your median household income is, which is sixty-five thousand plus. So that indicates, you know, that you're on, you're on the right route for not over expending funds and having this out of whack and above what's considered affordable for the community, again, based on census data. And that's what you have to go on. Okay, moving along to the sewer rate adjustments. Same table. Looking at the typical sewer bill with the new rate increase. Again, usage, three thousand, one hundred and nine gallons of water in your bill on sewer. Typical bill for that would be about twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. And it moves forward out to a bill of thirty-four dollars, fifty-one cents based on the projection of the cost we would be expending during that time period of ten years. Again, affordability. Forty-seven percent out to sixty-three percent is considered affordable based on how we've put cost into into phasing, implemented them, borrowing money, again, market rate interest, inflationary costs coming on board. So that pretty much gives you a picture on how that would play out over this ten year period based on those projections. The other aspect that I wanted to mention in this report was non-monetary considerations when you have public ownership of water and wastewater utilities versus privatization. The decision as to whether to transfer ownership for operations of a public water utility to a private firm is complex. It's conceivable that if the city had routinely raised user rates and kept up with water and wastewater infrastructure over the past twenty years, there would have been no interest by the city to sell that. However, with the perceived overwhelming administrative work ahead to upgrade the infrastructure, it would seem less daunting to sell the assets and realize a financial temporary benefit. For information, there's four types of privatization that are generally considered representative of the range of privatization available in the United States. Outsourcing of the performance of public, of specific public utility support services to private companies. Number two, full service contract operation management by private companies of publicly owned treatment works. And then getting a little bit more involved, combining design, construction with comprehensive operating agreements under design build contracts. All these, the city still owns the facilities, the infrastructure. And then number four, the sale of government owned water and wastewater assets to private water companies. The city is considering the last type of privatization, a complete sale of the assets to Aqua of Ohio. Only that option fully transfers risks and responsibilities of asset ownership, operation, maintenance, and replacement to the private sector. Perceived benefits by the public on maintaining public ownership of water and wastewater facilities include the following. Um it deals with, um you talk to people on the street. And a lot of people have some opinions. And citizens like the idea that they can call their local government office with a concern, city personnel can visit and check the concern without a charge to that person. People like that. Personal aspect of calling and talking to someone uptown about a utility bill, kind of keeps a feeling of a small community. There's not the feeling, um, there's just not that feeling of, uh, calling a one-eight-hundred number to speak to someone at a call center somewhere in the county or overseas. One doesn't feel like they live in a large urban area. Perceived concerns by the public on privatization is that perhaps future regionalization efforts by local communities may be stymied when the local communities perceive the private companies predatory and for profit. Expansion of the city's infrastructure for development reasons are not the decision of the city, since they do not control the water and sewer facilities. So, there are some thoughts that the public would have on this. Ultimately, the decision for the city to make concerning privatization is, does the community want to own and maintain their water and sewer wastewater utilities with all the challenges and hard work to come with that to maintain regulatory compliance and affordable utilities in order to provide safe drinking water and public health to the citizens? Or, does it make more sense to simply sell the asset and the corresponding responsibilities with the perception of a short-term financial benefit? The decision the city makes now is forever for the community, because once ownership is sold, it's not feasible to get it back, even with the buyback clause. That is a summary of what I wanted to discuss in this report to council. I'm seeing if Wayne wants to come in here, and I'm wondering, he can't seem to get back on here, Jody.
Do you have his phone number, uh?
He may be muted, he tried a few times, but he must be muted.
Is he calling? He might not be using the right access code, Jeff, do you have his phone number, uh?
Uh, I provided him the, yes.
What was the access code, you know, did you say he was on here earlier though?
He came on earlier and said, yes, he was on, but he must have used the wrong access code.
Well, if he used the wrong access code, he couldn't have said anything. Might try to have to call again. Jeff, could you, uh, give us his-
Maybe you could just-
If you, if you could give us-
He is six-seven-eight-four.
Okay, that's the public, uh, if you could give us his-
It's four-eight-two-seven.
Right.
Okay. All right, let me give him the correct one here while we're- All right, I just messaged him the correct number.
Okay, once he gets that correct number, he should pop up on here and, um, we should be able to tell here on the screen.
Jeff, this is Catherine, you did a fabulous job, you can't tell from telephone, but I'm giving you a standing ovation.
Oh, technical difficulties.
I got my phone, I'm holding it up near, that's a standing ovation.
Okay.
Jeff, can you give me the last four digits of his phone number only, and then we can check on the screen to make sure he's on?
Hello?
Okay, he's on-
Hello, there he is, Wayne?
Hey there, sorry about that.
Hi Wayne, I, I, either I made a mistake or we got two numbers to you, whatever, I apologize.
I went, I pulled up the draft council agenda and used that code.
Okay.
That is probably the mistake on my end.
Yeah.
Didn't understand the system.
Yeah, and the more important benefit to having Wayne on the line, um, really is for the questions of individual councilmen. I broad-range through the, uh, extraction of those forecasts, and at this time Wayne, is there anything you would like to add, um, that I, um, talked about, but it intended you to talk about?
Uh, the only thing that really stood out to me is when you look at affordability rates, the various funding agencies can usually consider affordability under one point five percent medium household in- income as being the threshold as where grant and low, and low-interest loan eligibility begins. Though, your rates are significantly below the threshold where it's gonna be easy to get any grant dollars. Uh, there's, there's the potential for grant funding for a regionalization, which is exactly what you're doing, but when it comes to affordability, uh, there's, there's really not gonna be any grant funding available for any of these projects. Uh, I kind of, we, you know, the, the supporting documentation is all available for everyone's review. Uh, the intent is to be very transparent. Uh, we took four years of history, used that to come up with a typical year, and then made adjustments on the water side to take out the cost, uh, the assumed cost of, uh, abandoning the treatment plant to come up with a revised typical year. That's, that typical year was then projected forward in the assumptions that were made on, on the forecasting side to come up with the, uh, the budget that Jeff went into great detail on the rates about. Uh, your community uses a lot less water than the old standard of forty-five hundred gallons. That's kind of typical with a lot of communities today. So, and the agencies have adjusted their funding mechanisms to kind of adapt to that. With that said, uh, what, uh, we calculated affordability is based upon actual average use, residential use for both water and sewer. So that should be fairly representative of a typical resident of the city. Uh, I, I put the forty-five hundred gallons there on, on the, on the, uh, the page, just to do the calculation, because that's the old way it used to be calculated. But quite honestly, the average resident does not use that much. Um, going to this-
Yeah, with all the new plumbing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's going to all the new plumbing fixtures, you know, everybody puts in a new, new plumbing, it uses less water than the old system. You know, old, old top loader washer used to use about forty gallons. A lot of the newer front loaders are only fourteen, fifteen gallons. So, and toilets, showerheads, everything uses much less water. Uh, kind of, it, it, when you're in the business of selling water, uh, conservation isn't necessarily good, particularly when you've got a lot of, of product to sell. But with that said, uh, that's just kind of what's going on. One of the big underlying trends that I see is you got a lot of water loss. I think you really need to do, regardless of which way you go, you need to do whatever you can to tighten up the system to reduce water loss. Uh, I kind of assumed about a two and a half percent reduction of water loss going from about forty-two percent down to about twenty percent over this ten-year period. Uh, quite honestly, twenty percent is still too high. Uh, you know, you, you really should be less than fifteen in an urban setting, such is what you've got. But it's, it's a slow general decline. When you're purchasing water, leaks become very, very expensive. And that's the reason why when Jeff and I talked about this, we put a great deal of emphasis on trying to work, uh, down water loss so that you wouldn't have the, that expense to bear throughout the, the, the ongoing future years.
And, and one of the things that I discovered in this analysis was, um, we always talked about using six hundred thousand gallons a day that was pumped to the, to the system, and then you build a certain amount and you have this hypothetical forty-eight percent loss. Well, as we got into the numbers, what I discovered was, um, through the operators, that for a period of three years, the meter were dysfunctional on the amount of water being pumped to the, uh, actual system, they were estimating, best they could. The new meters began to give us data on really what was being accurately pumped using magnetic meters, mag-meters we call, in the first quarter of this year. So the only numbers I could see when we pumped this year, they were much lower than six hundred thousand gallons per day, because they were actual real numbers and not three years of estimates based on, um, non-functional water plant meters.
And I, I'd made adjustments in that regard to look at the most current available information, and then comparing that to data that was available two years ago, when you did have functioning meters. Uh, I kind of disregarded those estimates, because they weren't meaningful. So we ma- we made a lot of, uh, uh, assumptions in those regards. Uh, I think very realistic goals for the community, should you decide to move forward on your own with an asset management type of procedure, uh, identifying both on the water side, water loss, and on the wastewater side, I and I issues, because you've got quite a bit of I and I on the, on the sewer side as well. And, as you're able to wrap your arms around some of those things, uh, you will see benefit, uh, to being able to, to, to accomplish that economic benefit. Uh, I felt fairly good about the analysis when we were done, from the standpoint that everything kind of fit into place and made sense. Um, and we still don't know exactly the type of projects or exactly where all the projects will be, but I think, uh, Jeff has put together a very good format to identify the need and to be able to address that in a reasonable amount of money. Looking at the, the analysis, looking at the rates, does anyone have questions for me?
All right, Jim, you're gonna move this around the council for each one to have a question.
Okay, uh, what we'll do is, uh, we'll start down, uh, in order, and, uh, I'll ask each council person by name if they have a question for either you or if you think it should be directed to, uh, to Wayne, then, uh, you can direct that question to him. And, uh, when the council person has finished asking their question, uh, whoever answers it states you're done, and we'll just continue on. We'll give each council person approximately on the, we've tried to do this twice, and we'll go through the first time with maybe each council person having five to six minutes to ask questions if they have that many, and then we can proceed down the line orderly, and then if they might have some other additional questions after they hear what somebody else is maybe asked. So what we'll do is we'll start off, uh, in order with, uh, I've got it written down here, so that I don't forget anybody like I did last time. Uh, we'll start with Frank, Frank, we'll go with approximately five to six minutes, uh, if you have any questions for Jeff.
Yeah, I got, uh, a couple of questions and some observations, uh.
You're breaking up-
Am I breaking up?
Yeah.
I'm still here, what, uh?
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Can now.
Hello?
Okay, go ahead Frank.
Yes, I'm still here Frank, I, I can hear.
Okay, uh, you know, just a few things, uh, uh, Jeff, uh, you know, from a construction point of view, uh, you and Wayne, you know, I, I hear a lot of ifs, and, uh, to me in construction, that translates to, uh, change of work orders, and there's, there seems, seems, still seems to be a lot of variables, you know, providing we keep it, uh, you know, intangibles and oh, by the ways, and, you know, in construction terms, on a construction project, and this was be, with this would be massive, it all would add up in dollars and cents, and actually thousands of dollars, and into the hundreds of thousands. Uh, do you find that statement rather correct? I mean, we, we don't know what-
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, doing this report, I think you realize that I have not been doing this for five years. Um, there's an experience factor here which allows me to have some judgment in terms of providing cost and seeing how they would be realized, and what we're portraying as future projects, um, from that standpoint. Been, been doing projects for probably forty years about and understand very well utility projects. There's many unknowns and nobody, I don't care who they are, can tell you that there's not gonna be change orders and surprises, because working in old communities, I've done a lot of water replacement projects, there's many unforeseen, so you just have to be ready, you have contingency budget for change orders, and you prepare to receive them. If you do your work upfront as best you can, you will have allowances for that, you budget for that, you have pay-ems that will adequately, you know, give a fair, um, ability for contractors to do that business in that community. But, um, I've done a lot of projects with utility replacements, and this is what you're gonna have, you're gonna have surprises. There are no deficits upfront for anybody.
And, can I add a couple of-
Sure, go ahead, Wayne, you Wayne?
Yeah, uh,
All right.
Pretty, pretty much what you need to realize is that you've got excessive I and I, and you've got excessive water loss. At this point, the studies necessary to identify the cause of that problem haven't yet been completed. And it doesn't matter if, who's doing that, uh, whether it's Jeff or whether it's Aqua Ohio. Those studies have not yet been completed. Uh, all you can kind of do is budget for the need, to do the studies, and then put some rough estimates for the renovation costs to make necessary corrections. Uh, the corrections on both water and sewer focus on distribution and collection. The focus is sol- at sol- solving real problems, once those real problems are identified.
Yeah, I understand that. All right, and, uh, uh, Jeff, my, my other question is, uh, the county will not be able to supply us until year five, and the reservoir in two years, according to EPA, will be shut down, what do we do in year three, four, and five?
Well, if you listen to what I was reporting on, um, it, it dealt with, you know, the reason to put the East End Booster Station in, in, in progress within the two-year timeframe, and that's what we negotiated with the Ohio EPA so that we could demonstrate, we shut the water plant down in year three, now Booster Station is there to provide the backup for the other one that's been, um, over at the water plant in two thousand and five. I know the dates are kind of confusing, um, went over a lot there, but, um, we had to demonstrate a hundred percent in year three. So it, it is there Frank, it is, from the council.
And, and, and unfortunately, you know, it, uh, I am, I'm, I'm assuming the other council people did not get it till late afternoon yesterday, and I wish I'd had more time to study it. And, uh, you know, my last observation is usually on proj- And, you know, my last observation is, usually on projects like this, I would feel comfortable going into a Dennis Bigler or Jim Zuchel, and sitting in their office and going over this entirely, entire report, but due to the undignified manner when Jim Zuchel was dumped from this administration, you know, I no longer have that person to talk to.
Frank, I don't think you need to go there.
So, you know, but just have to take your word for it, Jeff, and, you know, the... Is your twenty-five thousand dollar study, is it over Jeff?
No, I have to summarize some other things for the city, but if you have any questions that require any more information, I'm always open to have you call me, visit with me, and I can go over in depth a lot of the aspects of what went into preparing this, and the background information. Be happy to do that anytime.
Yeah, well, like I said, it was a lot to absorb, and I just didn't get it till yesterday afternoon for unknown reasons, and, you know, and read it once, read it twice, and, you know, waiting for your presentation, and, you know, you covered it verbatim.
Okay Frank, your five minutes is up there.
But that's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Mark. Mark, do you have any questions that you want to present to Jeff or Wayne?
Yes, I do, please. Very nice report, Mr. Vaughn, thank you for your work. I guess we can slice it and dice it however we want to, but I'm asking you, what is your conclusion? Would it be more beneficial to go with Belmont County water, or would it be more beneficial to the city to go with Aqua and their expertise?
Mark, I think you've missed some of the point here, that the going with water is not the choice. That was an EPA directive on getting rid of the water plant. That was what we were addressing in the first quarter. What I was addressing tonight was simply, if you maintain ownership, how do you do that, using public financing versus a private company doing the same things that I'm talking about doing, but with private money? The decision to buy the bulk water is a foregone conclusion, and that was done already. So, you know, the water purchase is a separate issue, and I was trying to make that pretty clear. You know, it has nothing to do with City of St. Clairsville and the future ownership or Aqua Ohio ownership. That decision has been made.
I guess I should have rephrased the question. At this point, would it still be an option to try to renegotiate a contract with Aqua with the changes that have occurred since the last negotiation?
And that was addressed at the beginning of your meeting tonight, okay? If I didn't understand your question, that's a whole question for the group and Aqua, I think. It's out of my responsibility in this, in this study.
Okay, so if we would do, if we would go the Belmont County route, do we have the manpower to be able to do these things that need to be done, or would that have to be hired out?
The city has to do, like I mentioned, if you maintain ownership, you have an experienced operating staff, you have to manage the future and decide what you can do in-house, what you hire out with the contractor, through bid projects, or what we call point repairs on the spot, which is what all the communities have always done. They have to figure that out on a forward basis, managing their water department funds and their sewer department funds, with the direction of some public works type director person. That's typically the responsibility, and what the main emphasis of a lot of public works person in those positions does, is water and wastewater management, is just what you've mentioned. And that's case-by-case basis on how best to implement a change or correction with that utility.
Okay. Mr. Cannon, are you still on the line?
Yes, yes, I am.
The recap, those are loans, those are not grants, correct? And we probably wouldn't be able to qualify for any type of grant, even regionalization, if I'm hearing that correctly?
You could, on the East End Booster Station, you could probably qualify for some money under regionalization. Everything else is fixing internal problems.
Okay.
And those internal problems would most likely not qualify for grants because of your high, medium household income.
Okay.
To go back into, kind of, and answer a little bit more on your question to Jeff, I assume that all of the existing personnel would continue to operate at St. Clairsville. You know, right now, their duties are dictated towards that treatment plan. In the future, they would have to be cross-trained, and to basically be distribution specialists that would help find some of the leaks, help fix some of the leaks. You know, it's going to be a change of roles for people, but the same number of people would still be there.
Okay. I guess my final question would be, what is the fee that our cap is charging for this? And I don't see it worked into any of these equations.
I'm not charging anything. My services are being provided from EPA grants, because they ask us to be involved in helping Belmont County with various regionalization projects, and, you know, I'm just doing, providing my services on a pro-grads basis. I don't have any skin in the game.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, we'll move on to Terry. Do you have any questions for Jeff or for Wayne?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Perry. Perry, do you have any questions for Jeff, or for Wayne?
I do. I have just a couple of questions. When it comes to bringing these projects on, I do know that the people that we have currently on staff have done a lot of the repairs. They had put the water line in up on Oak Street by my house, they did that project a few years ago. So, I don't want to underestimate the quality and the ability of the people that we do have. Now, I know there will be some cross-training, and some things that they have to learn to do, but there's a good part of what we do here, that our sewer water guys already do do. They do do, they do the repairs on a daily basis, when we have water leaks, sewer leaks. So, and I do know that we did lose quite a bit of personnel within the Sewer Water and Streets Department over the last few years. I'm sure we all realize that. This was a deliberate degradation of our workforce, to make it more advantageous to sell, we all know that already.
Perry, do you have a specific question?
But I think over time, we'll be bringing more people back. We'll be bringing more people back into the fold as we need. That's really all I wanted to say. And also, I know that this whole value engineering thing about the Overbaugh area, is that a project that can be done starting here in the summer?
Um, yes Perry, we would want to do that immediately, just to, you know, take the drawings, look at it, and see what we can do, when we're looking at those three homes, for that immediate, what we, I call a health and safety issue, to be resolved, and plan for that, because you've got to do something.
Yeah, I realize that, that's an EPA major issue, sanitary, and those folks really need some rent. It's been going on too long. All right, well, thank you, that's all I had.
Yeah, one additional comment, as far as personnel costs, if you look at the typical year, there's a notes section that shows how I came up with that typical year. I did not assume that two thousand nineteen was typical. I took a four-year average of sixteen through nineteen. So, I've captured some of that pre-runoff cost in my typical year that got projected forward.
Mm-hmm, okay, I see it. All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you Perry. We'll move on to Beth. Beth, do you have any questions for either Jeff or Wayne?
Yeah, I have no specific questions regarding the report at this time. I'd like to take some more time to digest it. I appreciate, I appreciate the presentation, but again, just a little more time to digest it. I do know that I'm welcome to ask any questions, as any council person would be, as they continue. We have two weeks to digest this report, before we have to make a vote. So, we have ample time to read this report, and to follow up with questions, and I know that Jeff would be open to that. I'd like to make two comments then, so I reserve that I might ask questions as I digest this further, but just not at the moment. I want to thank Jeff and Wayne for their professionalism, diligence, the time and the expertise for this report. I'm not looking at this report and taking Jeff's word for it. I'm counting on his experience, his expertise, and quite frankly, I'm losing patience with Mr. Sabatino's snarky.
Okay, I don't think that's going to get us anywhere either, for either Frank or for Wayne.
Well, no, I'm going to make this comment. I'm going to make the comment that the lack of professionalism needs to stop. I'll stop now.
Mr. Veles? I want to interject, I have checked to Ms. Opresh once again. Is it all right?
Wait a minute, excuse me, we're getting too many people talking at once here. First of all, Beth, are you done?
I am.
Okay, you have no other comments, you're completely done, I mean with that comment.
Yeah, Jeff, or Jim?
Okay, Frank.
Yes.
I want to reply to Ms. Opresh. You know, anyone, everyone, she thinks that she's the only one can express her opinion, and anyone else, she, you know, she comes down on it. You know, I really object to her.
Okay.
You know, all that she's said and done the last two years, you know, you know, no one's said anything. The boy, you say something, and then she jumps on you.
Okay, I think at this time, what we're supposed to be...
I'm sick and tired of her.
Well, I think what we're supposed to be discussing Frank, at this time, and Elizabeth, or not Elizabeth, I'm sorry, Beth, we're supposed to be discussing the water and the sewage issues, and right now, in the personality disputes, right now is not going to accomplish anything. So, we will...
Mr. Veles, I'd ask you to do your job, when Mr. Sabatino makes underhanded comments, that you shut him down when he first starts.
When he makes pointed comments directly at somebody, I think that will be taken care of. But at this point...
He did.
But at this point...
Mr. Veles, he did, and that's why I'm responding.
Okay, well, at this point in time, like I say, this is a question-and-answer period, strictly for the water issue, not the voice opinions of the way things transpired in the past, and that technically goes for all council people, and for myself also. So, at this point...
Mr. Veles, that I'd ask you...
Excuse me, excuse me. For this, from this point on, let's keep the personal comments out of this meeting, and let's discuss actually what needs to be done, and ask direct questions, and leave the personalities out of it. Okay, Beth, are you done questioning Jeff at this point?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, Mike. Mike, do you have any questions for either Jeff or Wayne?
Um, I just have a question on, so Aqua, whether we do it, it's going to be the same path, correct? At this point?
Mike, you mean in regards to water purchase?
Well, whether Aqua, we saw the Aqua or we do it, it's going to be the same path, whereas before, I think there were some different, um, uh, different ways to go about it. Like Aqua, people had any impression they were going to build a new water plant, but they probably are not going to do that. They were just going to go after county water, just like we will at this point.
They have to, Mike, they don't have a choice.
Um, and then, the past administration kept telling us rates were going to triple, that's just not true, right? From what I'm hearing?
Wayne, you can speak to that.
The chart that was provided is our best estimate of what rates will need to do in order to provide the level of capital improvement that were projected, which on the water side was about six and a half million dollars over ten years, and on the sewer side, was about three and a half million dollars over ten years. You've got, you've got pretty good revenue coming in right now, thanks to the rate increases you've already booked, and it's, a lot of what you need to do is to leverage that money that's coming wisely. I don't know if you heard that or not, there's an awful lot of breakup on my end.
Okay, I have no further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mike. You were breaking up there a little bit, but I think he understood what you were saying. Okay, we'll move on. Linda, do you have any questions for Jeff or Wayne?
Yes, I do. Thank you both for joining us on this call. I would like to know, do you know if the county has secured funding for their project?
Yes, they have, I'll speak to that. The, it's U.S.D.A. funded, they have not closed, they've closed on the sewer, they have not yet closed on the water, will probably happen this summer.
Oh, okay, thank you. And the next question, on page seven, the third paragraph down, regarding the Overbaugh Bellevue project, exactly what does that mean, even though the funding pathway forward is not identified at this time? I may have missed it during your presentation, if so, I'm sorry, but I did want to...
Which page, Linda? Okay, I see what you're saying.
Page seven?
What that meant was, oh, okay. Linda, we assumed the cost that was estimated for that project, the one point six million, we put it in the forecast model as a placeholder, so it's not like it's forgotten. We're budgeting to spend money in that area, but the way it was proposed to be done, it can't be done that way, because it was not consummated in terms of a signed loan agreement with the matching funds, but we're still, you know, planning to spend money in that area, at that number of dollars, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay. It's there, it's not identified specifically.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Okay, if no one else has any further questions, I don't hear anybody saying anything. We're going to go quickly around. Frank, do you have any additional questions?
Uh, can you hear me, or are you breaking up?
You're breaking up a little bit.
Okay. Uh, no, the anything I would have to say to Jeff is, Jeff, in the last couple of years, I've been on that utility, last few years, as a matter of fact, you know, we've covered this, you know, pretty much what you covered tonight, in utility, Jim Zuchel covered, you know, on council floor. Probably the biggest, if any wrinkles that we didn't have was the Mark Scarry issue, but, you know, I think we all know where we're at. And Jeff, do you agree with the statement that, you know, no administration brought this on, Flint, Michigan... Uh, Flint, Michigan precipitated a sleeping giant at the EPA water and woke this whole country up. And it's not only St. Clairsville, it's most communities in general. Would you agree with that?
No, because, um, Flint, Michigan issue there, not everybody, that was dealing with the water quality issue and passing a different water from, you know, into the system. Um, it was not approved water. And what we're talking about here is the water that you already, if you're alluding to Belmont County's water in your pipes. Um, anytime you change water, there's a different water chemistry. Um, once you do that, you can have different outcomes that you're not expecting. Um, the plan here was to, you know, to buy that water and replace the lines. And temporarily, if you have, you're gonna have a, a water adjustment period as the water is different. And then you can have some brown water effects, and that was experienced in the past, okay? The big deal that we didn't like to do in St. Clairsville was blend the water. They tried that for years and it didn't really work too well because of two different water chemistries. It was either one or the other. Um, but the bigger function there also was the, the lack of replacement of lines over many decades, um, that caused the internals of the pipe to be open for corrosion. So, when you add different water chemistries in there, you begin to take away the, uh, what was called the protective coatings in the line from one to another. And they use what's called the Langley's index and they had corrosive water up there. Um, I don't understand how that ever occurred because, uh, water operators look at that. They have to address that with their EPA inspector, that they're not putting a water in a system that has a certain, you know, corrosive nature to it. It has to be a depositing water. So, you look for that Langley balance where you can put it in there, or you're gonna have a taking away process of the pipe, meaning stripping away the deposited mineral coatings, allowing that lead to leach back out into the water and to go in the ser- service lines. And in that case, it was really the individual lead service lines on private property that caused a lot of the problem. So, it was a pretty complicated scenario, but it dealt with, um, someone not paying attention to the water being put in the line and its nature of being a non-corrosive, you know, depositing water. So, I, I can't see how that would happen here with the ability of your operators and the paying attention to those numbers with EPA looking down your back, um, all the time.
Okay, and I, and I think Wayne may have touched on this. Uh, it'd be my last question. Uh, our four operators, what would happen to them long-term?
Wayne addressed that. We would never, you know, it was proposed they would be shifted into different roles from doing water treatment plant expertise. And they would get into, um, leak detection, water audits, um, even crossing over, you know, perhaps, um, into the I-N-I control program. So, they would always be doing different things. You would enable them with different skill sets to make them more valuable to the community, um, to work there for as long as they wanted to. Because you definitely need the manpower.
Alright, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Jim.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Mark, do you have any additional questions?
Yes, going forward, Mr. Vaughn, what would the asset management plan cost us to do that study? Cause we, we will have to do it one way or the other.
Yes, um, Wayne can more so address how that works and how he's doing it with Belmont County.
Okay. We have ti- typically been charging to do asset management plans. Uh, what we're do- EPA at this point has come out with a fairly streamlined checklist that can be completed locally. What I would really kind of focus on is for you guys to do that as much in-house as possible, as opposed to hiring Jeff or me or somebody else. But then, but then have somebody come in, and if you haven't been exercising valves, do a valve exercising program. If you don't understand the, the pressures and controls on all the hydrants, have somebody do a hydrant, help you with a hydrant testing program. Set up those requirements, set up those, uh, standard operating procedures so that you can do them in-house. But get you started down the way to do some of these specialty tasks that historically, most communities haven't done. And, you know, the format that we had to do this, I didn't get a chance to talk to anybody at, in St. Clairsville to know what you've done on a maintenance side, what you haven't done on a maintenance side. I'm going to assume that you're somewhere typical of most communities that they've kind of kicked this can down the road and they've ignored a lot of those common tasks. Uh, those things need to be done. A water audit needs to be done. Those, I think, are the things that you need to spend time, effort, and energy on so that you're actually improving the quality of your assets. And, uh, you know, I would say the exact same thing to Aqua Ohio. It, it doesn't matter who owns the system. It's something that has to be done and it's now the law with EPA. For obvious reasons, they have mandated asset management. They're doing the same thing on sewer, but they're writing it into discharge permits for, when those get renewed. And they call it a C-MO Plan. Uh, it's six, one half dozen the other. You're gonna have to, to at some point, do a better job, whoever owns the system, of managing that underground infrastructure.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Tara, do you have any questions for Jeff or Wayne?
I do not, thank you.
Perry, do you have any additional questions for either Jeff or for Wayne?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, my question is, so, if we're, so, let me just reiterate, but try to understand what you're saying. We were looking at the, the income to the water, to the water and sewer enterprise. And by projecting, uh, the water and sewer rates over the next ten years, you're saying that we do have enough money and there is enough money coming in to continue with these projects and continue with the debt service. Am I correct?
Correct. On the water side, you would need to borrow to do that six and a half million dollars. I'm showing about four and a half million dollars in three projects.
Okay.
But on the wastewater side, it looks to me like you could be able to accomplish everything that's being shown. Uh, you know, doing it for the most part in-house. And the only thing you'd be borrowing money for would be that upfront, that Bel Air, Bellevue sewers. So, you'd ha- you'd have to borrow money for that. But once you got over that hurdle, you'd be able to do the other sewer projects with cash on, as you, uh, with savings. Uh, money that you get from rates, which is the best way to finance those type of projects.
That's amazing, because- No, go ahead.
In the long run, if, in the long run, if you can avoid paying interest, you're much, much better off. And I've tried to set this up to the extent possible where you're managing your money to spend as much of your own money on capital projects as possible to, to minimize the amount of debt.
Thank you. I'm, actually, I'm, I'm quite surprised, actually. Uh, I, that's really good news, that we can actually do this and it's feasible for us with minimum loans. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Your si- your, your, your situation isn't as dire as what I think a lot of people believe it to be. And you really are generating a lot of money right now with the rate increases that you've already approved.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your input.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Perry. Beth, do you have any questions additional for either Jeff or for Wayne?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mike, do you have any additional questions?
I, I do not, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Linda, do you have any additional questions?
Um, yes. Is any of this including the, um, underground infrastructure? This report, was there anything in there?
Linda, can, can you repeat that question again, please?
Sure. Um, was there anything in the report regarding the underground infrastructure, the pipes that need replaced?
Well, yes, that was the, uh, meat of the whole presentation. Was, uh, replacement of the water lines, that's the main priority. And then, uh, leaky underground sewer issue.
Okay, I, I, I thought it was, I thought this was just, um, from Ferry. I, I didn't realize it was all through town. I'm sorry, I haven't had a real chance to look at this report. That's why I don't have-
Okay.
Many, since I know I will. So, okay.
Pretty much, the capital projects that are focused on in here is to do some studies so you can identify where the problems really are.
Okay, and also-
With water loss and I-N-I, and then address those in detail later.
Okay, also, would the city have any, um, say in rates? Or would that go through Martin Scary, Bel Air, Belmont County? How would that work? Hello?
I'm sorry, Linda, but got feedback here.
Oh, okay. Would, would the city have any say in the rates? Or is that, would that be through, um, Ferry, Bel Air, Belmont County, or whomever else we?
No, you would have, in the public ownership model, you have complete control on that. I mean, we would, there's like a subjective nature to doing this, like, uh, Wayne's explaining. We, we look at the projects, the priorities, and then try to gauge what their cost is. And then, looking at the cash flow, trying to minimize going into extreme debt, cash flowing a certain amount of it, borrowing through a certain amount. You, you have total control over that. You have total decision-making. Because you start off by planning the costs out, looking at the impact on your cash flow and your rates, and then you decide how much you want to bite off and move forward with. If you have a mandatory thing you must do, then sometimes that can impact an entity and they've got to borrow a bunch of money and have a rate increase. But if you plan forward with this asset management plan to great detail, then you should not have surprises out ahead. That's the whole point of the exercise.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Linda. I, I do want to mention, uh, first of all, Jeff, I want to thank you for your presentation. And Wayne, I want to thank you for your input. Uh, I think you put a very good presentation forward. Uh, and I do want to mention, I know everybody, uh, received this, uh, report and the maps that were done electronically. But just for your information, I sent an email out and I think a text message letting everyone know. Roberta did print up those entire reports and all of the maps, uh, hard copies. If any of the councilpeople want to have a hard copy to look at, uh, they are in your boxes, mailboxes in the, uh, city building. And if you would, uh, gonna put a little bit of work here on Tom. If, if you would call Tom Murphy, because he's been working out of the building. If you would call him ahead of time that you are coming up, he can let you into the building to get the hard copy that is in your mailbox in the, the city building in the, in the office. Uh, where you can actually take it home and look at it without having to bring it up, printing it up at home. Okay, uh, that being said, we'll move on at this time again. Thank you, Jeff, and I appreciate your, uh, input. Uh, we have no-
Alright, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, the reports. Mayor, do you have an additional, anything to report?
Actually, I do. First of all, again, much thanks to Jeff Vaughn and Mr. Wayne Cannon and Mr. Perry Basil, who's put in an awful lot of time looking through the water and investigating what needs to be done. Um, I'd like to thank our chief, Chief Arbin. He keeps me updated with the SIP rep report, which is concerning COVID in Belmont County. As of right now, we have sixty-five active cases of COVID in Belmont County. Uh, unfortunately, it's probably going to get worse before it gets better. So, again, please maintain the social distance and all the hygienic, uh, recommendations to mitigate this spread of this disease. I had, uh, two, two good things I wanted to talk about. The police department, I had a call from Mr. Toriseva, who called me to tell me what a good job our police department was doing. They had a suspicious character on their property. They called the police. They then came out, they apprehended the man, and I guess he'd been scamming residents. But our department caught him and took him to custody. Kudos to Officer Stewart, who responded to a call concerning a resident who lives in my neighborhood. She's elderly and in distress. Uh, I asked Officer Stewart what I needed to do. I just happened to find it when I was walking my dog. He took care of it. And then Officer Greg Clark called senior services to get this lady enrolled in Senior Meals on Wheels. Way to go, gentlemen. Uh, the rec department continues to rise to the challenge of online interactive programs. Last week, they did a scavenger hunt with an Easter theme. That's wonderful. Vaughn Smithberger, I'm really happy with you guys. They've already got two of the meters for the city buildings installed. Way to go. Tom Murphy continues to help us seek out grants as well as getting coding and zoning work done and GPS mapping. And I wanted to say something to Mr. Sabatino. I need to address your statement about Mr. Zuchel being dumped. If you're talking about being dumped in terms of his begging me to keep him on because he wanted to maintain his PERS insurance, then I did. I kept him on. But he, he exercised his letter of his own accord. So, just so you know that. And Frank, I appreciate your being so, such a conservator of the city's cash. And I know you went in to speak to Mr. Zuchel. Um, I, you are welcome to come into my office anytime I get to see you. And if you were on the utilities and Mr. Zuchel, how did this water situation get so bad? And I am asking that to you.
This, this was not, uh, and this, this, Mr. Pew, Mr. Zuchel and the, and the city did not create it. They inherited it. This was coming-
So was I.
For years, for years and years and years. And, you know, they, they dealt with it. And many of the things that Jeff Vaughn said tonight, Jim Zuchel told this city council. And, you know, and Mr. Pew dealt with it how he could, how he saw fit. But, you know, they don't deserve to be thrown under the bus. You know, they did things too.
No one's been thrown under the bus. Things have been presented factually.
I'm talking, please. You know, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know why it's, it's always theirs to blame. You know, it's the city that has to move forward. You know, let's put, uh, bygones be bygones and move forward and be constructive and solve the problem that the EPA has told us to deal with. But they, you know, records, re- financial records show they dealt with objects. And, you know, and as, and as far as Mr. Zuchel and all, that's my case after this. You know, what's hard to believe is the way, you know, he was fired by a secretary and he was escorted in an undignified manner out of the city building. I have issues with that.
He was not fired. Mr. Seb, you know, he was not fired. He exercised his letter after misspeaking to me about bordering meters. And I thank you for your comment. But again, my question stands, if they dealt with it, how did it get so bad? So, you can think about that. I would be remiss if I did not mention it.
You were listening.
I beg your pardon.
If you were listening, I answered it. Ninety-four years, ma'am.
Well, I, actually, the, actually, the real issue, the real issue is ignoring the EPA for four years.
I think we need to get on with the-
Dumbest thing I've ever heard of.
I think we need to get on with the agenda.
Uh, I think, I think that gentleman's out of line, Mr. Veles.
Okay, I, I-
Yeah, you're out of line, Frank.
I think right now-
No, you are.
I think right now, you're all getting out of line. I think you are not talking over other people. So, I think we've pushed this about as far as it can be pushed, and let's get on with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Veles. I agree. I just needed to address that comment because it's a gross inaccuracy of facts.
Okay.
I would be remiss if I did not mention Roberta Murk, who has risen to every challenge I have thrown her way. Roberta is a scrupulous, outstanding employee. She will always have my respect and I will always have her back. Council has a very large void to fill when Roberta completes this meeting. Thank you, Roberta, for your attention, your time- Thank you, Roberta, for your attention, your time, and your kindness. And I would say good luck at finding someone to fill her shoes. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we'll move on to the, uh, police chief's report. Matt Arbens, are you here? Do you have a report?
I am here. I've got, uh, very little to report, other than supplies are plentiful, thanks to several donations. Uh, crime reports are less than minimum, thanks to cooperative community. Other than that, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Does anybody have any questions? Frank, do you have a question for Matt?
No, I do not.
Mark, do you have any questions for Matt?
No, sir, I do not.
Tara, do you have any questions for the police chief, Matt?
No, sir.
Terry, you broke up there for a minute. I couldn't tell what you were saying.
I, I do not have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Perry, do you have any questions for Matt?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. Beth, do you have any questions for Matt?
I just want to thank him for his leadership and all the officers that are on the front line, out there every day, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Mike, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Lynda, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Annette Williams, Finance Director. Uh, do you have anything you want to report?
I just wanted to say, um, I've just been keeping busy with the daily operations. I'm working on some, uh, financial forecasting. And then, um, to thank the departments for working with me. Mostly everything's by the phone or email, and, um, I've been working with Catherine and Jody on different projects every day. That's all.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Annette? Frank, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Mark, do you have any questions for Annette?
No, sir.
Thank you. Tara, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Perry, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Beth, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you. Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I do not.
And Lynda, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to planning and zoning. Uh, Mr. Murphy, Tom, do you have a report this evening?
Uh, yeah, just a few things for city council. Uh, permits are moving along. We're consistent with last year. Reminders were sent out in both the, uh, resident, to the residents and their utility bills, and to contractors, uh, thanks to Anita and Roberta for their help on that. Uh, calls regarding a possible, poss- the possible development of vacant property along Reservoir Road, some two locations on West Main Street, and an existing structure on East Main Street. Received those phone calls, all are very preliminarily, preliminary. Uh, it's just in the question phase, so we can't really go into much detail right now. Uh, no property has been purchased yet, uh, in regard to the census. Uh, response rate is up to sixty-four point seven percent, so great news there. Questions have come up in regard to the timeline due to the coronavirus, uh, because correspondent with our contact and other sources as well. And it sounds like the enumeration phase and the self-response phase will be extended to October thirty-first. And the official census report will be given to the president rather than on December thirty-first. Um, it would take place on April thirtieth, so we won't know, probably don't, later next year than we expected what the population is. Uh, I have been working with Don Smithberger, Scott Harvey, Dustin Reed, and Jeff Vaughn. I'm up with a plan to enter relevant water valve information into our GIS system. Uh, that actual work will start soon, so, uh, things are moving along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Frank, do you have any questions for Tom?
I have none.
Mark, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Tara?
No, thank you.
Perry?
Uh, yeah, hey, Tom. Uh, so, GIS system, do, were we able to update that software to the current software, and everything's, everything's working good?
Yeah, every, uh, everything was updated. It was loaded onto my computer, Anita's computer, and Donnie's computer. Again, we're in the early stages still right now. Our, our computers will be updated. And we're gonna get new computers. That's not gonna be a problem. The new, the program can be loaded onto those new computers. There's gonna be a learning curve, obviously, because it is new to all of us. Uh, but it looks like all the data transferred over. Um, as time goes by and we get to use the program a bit more, we can, uh, work out any bugs in that.
Great, that's great news. Thanks, Tom.
Yes.
Okay, Beth, do you have any questions for Tom?
Just, Tom, is there anything else that council members could do to help with the census data?
Uh, my suggestion is always, which is, really seems to work best, in my opinion, is just anybody you see, uh, talk to them, bring it up. When someone stops in or contacts me about a permit, I bring it up to them and just, uh, try to push them along if they haven't filled it out. I've offered my services name and, uh, phone number. They can always contact me. I can assist them with that census.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Thank you, Beth. Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Lynda?
Um, I don't have any questions, but, uh, I just wanted to let Tom know it's time now for people to cut grass. I witnessed somebody on South Sugar Street cutting the grass and leaving the clippings in the road. So I don't know if you send something out in the, uh, utility bills or how you d- handle that. But might be a good time to remind people not to leave the clippings in the road.
Thanks, Lynda.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Lynda. Okay, we'll move on to the council committees. Finance, Mike, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, but it's kind of tough to meet during this time. But, uh, I mentioned to Annette, if there's something pressing, we're gonna have to get together. But we get it, and, and every other committee's in the same boat. Um, if we're going to meet, we're gonna have to publish it. It probably has to be open to the public. Um, and that, that could kind of be a pretty hassle. But if there's something very pressing and so we can meet in person, um, you know, and that's gonna let us know, me or anybody else on the finance committee.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Beth, do you have a report for utilities?
Uh, uh, utility meeting's not scheduled until March, or till May fourth. Uh, Anita, as usual, is right on top of it, so there'll be a few matters that I'll discuss with her and get with the committee, um, about pool meters and the park pool credits. And then we'll also have to discuss whether disconnects and penalties, where we want to, where we'll be with that in May. So I would expect a report, um, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Beth. Mark, do you have a police report this evening?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Tara, do you have a report for the North Side Street?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Beth, uh, anything on the South Side, the streets?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Tara, and anything on the Safety Committee?
No.
Okay, thank you. Perry, uh, Building and Grounds, do you have any report or anything on, uh, that that you want to report? Perry, are you still with us?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I had you on mute. Um, yeah, up by the baseball fields, uh, Donnie, last month, had the guys push a lot of that, uh, street debris and, and stuff off to the, you know, they got rid of it so we can clear out an area. And, uh, I know it's been too wet to do anything, but thanks, Donnie, for taking care of that. And, uh, I'm looking forward to like, when it dries up a little bit, to either put stone or re- reseed it, or whatever we have to do. I appreciate it. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Perry. Frank, anything on the Planning Commission?
No, Tom covered everything. Nothing new.
Okay, thank, okay, thank you. Anything, uh, any report on the Fire District, Frank?
Uh, just a, a couple things. Uh, we had a regular scheduled meeting last Wednesday. Uh, it was canceled. Uh, we've rescheduled it for the twenty-ninth of April. Uh, because of the social distancing and the amount of people, uh, you're gonna have to look at newspaper. We're trying to find a place that would accommodate, and we could be spread out. So, uh, we will be publishing something, I assume, either next Monday, the twenty-seventh, or Tuesday the twenty-eighth, and anticipating the meeting on twenty-nin- on the twenty-ninth at three o'clock. Location, undetermined yet. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
And thank the guys for doing what they're doing out there, close responders.
Amen to that. Okay, we'll move on to Recreation Department. Lynda?
Um, there are child-specific exercises from Ohio Valley CrossFit on the Facebook page, uh, the, the center's Facebook pa- page, that is. And at a later date, there'll also be senior exercises led by Moversize instructor, as well as a summertime safety video led by Fire Chief, Chief Tim Hall. Um, they're also working with the police department to add some safety videos. Um, they'll be doing a video of some, uh, someone from Ponsonny Landscaping on the basics of landscaping and how to, um, determine poison in your yard. And Sean also had to put caution tape around the amphitheater area and the playground area. I'll be meeting with Debbie to help her secure vendors for concerts very soon. And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Lynda. Okay, do you have anything on the Park District?
No report.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have nothing on the agenda in the way of legislation, but I will, uh, defer to our law director, Elizabeth Glith.
Uh, you are correct. There's no pending legislation before council tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, that takes us to the end of the agenda. The only other thing under new business is council clerk. Uh, I want to just remind council that, uh, Roberta's last day as council clerk will be April thirtieth, so if you can kind of, uh, get your heads together on the phone, email, text, whatever, if you have any suggestions of any one opinions, or if you have talked to anybody, uh, you need to try and get someone in that position as soon as possible. Okay, I'm assuming at this point, under the, uh, current state of the country with the COVID nineteen, our next meeting is Monday, May fourth. I am assuming at this point in time that, at the very least, that meeting and very possibly the second meeting in May will also be a teleconference meeting. Uh, that's not definite yet, but that is the way it's kind of looking right now. So...
So, Jim, this is Beth.
Yes, go ahead, Beth.
I just want, before, while we were still on council clerk, I just also want to thank Roberta for all of her efforts as our clerk. And I just want, I just want to thank her. I think she did a great job, and I appreciate it.
I second that, now.
Jim, this is, this, I, I heard that. I was, I didn't, I didn't know when to interject here, but, um, Jim, this is Tara, and I wanna, I wanna reiterate exactly what Beth said. Um, I think she's done a fantastic job, and we appreciate the work that she's done.
Thank you, guys.
I agree. Thank you, Roberta.
Thank you.
Okay, that is correct. I think Roberta has done a really good job, especially in these last few months when the meetings have gotten very long and the minutes have been almost like a short story or a novel rather than just minutes. So, um, she has worked very hard on that, and I also want to thank her. She's, uh, done a good job, as far as I'm concerned. And I also want to repeat on that, for council, those copies that she made for everybody are in your boxes in the mailbox. Uh, if you want to call Tom, I'm gonna, again, put you to work. If, they'll call him and open the, uh, door. He will let you in to get your report. The only other thing I want to say is with what we're facing with the water and sewage issues, uh, we've got, uh, a lot of things on our plate. We're fighting issues with COVID nineteen. We don't know where we're going with that. Uh, the country's got a lot of issues, and so do we here in the city. So at this time, I would like to make a comment that I think, in order for us to do our jobs sitting here on this city council, we need to concentrate on our jobs, what we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing. Let's forget how we got here, whether it took place last week, last month, ten years ago, or fifty years ago. We're in the middle of the desert. How we got here doesn't matter at this point. Uh, the point is trying to get out of it. So I think we would serve the city and the residents much better if we would, from everybody's point of view, let's leave the personal issues out, and let's concentrate on what's in the best interest of the city. That's all I have to say. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn. This is Mike.
Okay, Mike, do we have a second?
I'll second it. This is Perry.
Okay, moved and seconded. Meeting is adjourned.